I don't know.
It is his birthday. We sing happy birthday to him in my classroom.
Oh, my God.
We'll take the next one off.
All around.
Yeah, same. Mine, when I got married, it was short.
My mom wore, um, like, three feet of, uh, platinum blonde extensions.
Yeah, that's funny. My mother said...
I probably have the same hair. I do that.
It's funny, because, uh...
All right, welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. If you haven't already signed in, please come to, uh, come forward and do so for us, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, may I have the roll call, please? Mrs. Shapiro?
Here.
Mrs. Garibay?
Here.
Mr. Hawk?
Ruby Zen.
Ms. Jacobs Rohan?
Here.
Mr. Paris?
Here.
Mr. Pagoda?
Here.
Ms. Schutz?
Here.
Ms. Siri?
Here.
Ms. Wilton?
Here.
All right, we'll begin with Section 2, Consideration of an Action Upon Approval of Past Meeting Minutes. May I please have a motion to approve study session meeting minutes for October 7th, 2024, and regular voting meeting minutes for October 21st, 2024?
I'll make that motion. Paris, second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Ayes have it. Item B, Treasurer's Report. Motion for approval of the Treasurer's Report as presented. Number 1, General Fund for October 2024. Number 2, Athletic Fund 2020, October of 2024. Number 3, Food Service Fund, October 2024. Number 4, Capital Improvement Fund, October 2024. 5, Student Activities Fund, October 2024. 6, PA Municipal Real Estate Collections, October 2024. 7, MBM Delinquent Real Estate Collections for October 2024. 8, Keystone Collections Earned Income and Local Service Tax Collections, October 2024. 9, The General Fund Approval of Bills, Fund 10 for October 2024. May I have a motion?
Paris, so moved.
Wilton, second.
Any discussion, questions? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, ayes have it. All right, moving right along. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. Uh, appreciate you attending, and being that it is November 18th, Thanksgiving is right around the corner. Uh, so I just wanted to say a note of thanks, um, to all of our teachers, staff, administrators, and support staff here for River View. Um, also a personal note of thanks to, um, my board and all of the folks that keep everything running here at our, uh, school district. So, um, I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving, uh, next week. So, moving into our first hearing of citizens, uh, this is for agenda items only. So, anything that's on the agenda, if you have a question or want to speak on, uh, please come forward, state your name and address, and keep your comments under 3 minutes, and be advised that the meeting is streamed live and is recorded. There will be another hearing of citizens at the end of the meeting for any and all school-related business. All right, seeing none, we will move on to Section 5, Motions for Approval Under Finance. Uh, Mr. Hawk or Ms. Wilton?
All right, can go. Um, motion 5A, motion to approve the following change orders and/or invoices in conjunction with River View Capital Improvement Project. 1, Draw Collective for Capital Improvements 23-S18-01-06, Capital Improvements 2024, for Basic Services, ending September 30th, 2024, in the amount of $7,312.50. 2, Draw Collective for Capital Improvements 23-S18-01-22, Capital Improvements 2022, for Basic Services, ending September 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,583.35. Do I have a motion?
Paris, so moved.
Siri, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it.
Uh, motion 5B, motion to approve the following contracts agreements subject to final review and approval of the solicitor. 1, Allegheny Intermediate Unit Resolution R2425-008, with the AIU for Joint Purchasing Program for the 2025-2026 school year. 2, Agreement between River View School District and Forbes Road Career and Technology Center for Schools' Health Services Collaboration. And 3, Agreement between River View School District and Holy Family Specialized Learning for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Um, before we make that motion, can I actually ask that 1 be pulled out separately?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Should we, we'll do 1 first?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so on, uh, 5B, uh, 1.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Siri, second.
I'm sorry, who was first? Jen.
Uh, discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstentions?
Um, yes, I abstain, as I am a current member on the AIU board.
Okay. All right, ayes, ayes have it. Motion passes. And then we'll go to 5B, uh, 2 and 3. Do I have a motion for those?
Paris, so moved.
Shapiro, second.
Whichever.
Any discussion?
Yeah. We're too far.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it. Motion passes. All right, uh, motion 5C, motion to approve the following financial items. 1, Closure of the Key Bank Account Ending 2/7/5/8, Including Transfer of Balance to Dollar Bank General Fund In the Amount of $943,116.79. 2, Disposal, Recycling, and Certified Data Destruction Of 125 Desktop Computers and Monitors and 100 Student Devices As Presented. And 3, Recommend Approval to Contract With Southwest Greens For 10th Street Elementary and Werner Elementary Playground Improvements In the Amount of $141,899, Plus An 8% Contingency Of $11,352, Totalling $153,251 As Presented. Do I have a motion?
Pagoda, I'll make that motion. Paris, second.
Any discussion?
Dr. English, this is, the, um, turf project is taken out of capital funds, right? So there's already...
Yes.
Money's allocated.
Yep, that is a capital project, yes.
And then, um, Ms., um, Lubert, do we have figures as to how much will be left in capital after this project?
Um, by going from the Treasurer's Report? I'm opening it in a second. Currently, in the Pliget Capital Reserve, there's, uh, around $2.5 million.
Okay, thank you.
Is it correct that most of that really is kind of earmarked for the high school kitchen project?
A portion of that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, personally, I'm excited about the turfing project. I think I mentioned last time, when my kids were at the school, there were times where they should have been outside, and they just couldn't, because it was wet out and the mud and the dirt. And, um, I think it's just really important that our kids are be able to go out and enjoy the outdoors. Um, sure, I, you know, ideally, we could, would have this beautiful green space with, you know, yeah, all the, you know, local plants and all that stuff, but it just doesn't seem like that's a reasonable, um, reasonable for our playgrounds, for such a small area that is trampled on by a lot of little feet every day, hopefully. So, um, I think it will be a good, a good investment for the, for the district, personally.
I just wanted to share just a couple thoughts. Um, I, I actually wrestled with this decision quite, quite a bit, um, because every email that we got, I agreed with. I agreed with everybody, all the yays and all the nays. Um, and I really appreciate everybody emailing us. That was really good, to have everyone's, uh, feedback. Um, so here are my thoughts. The turf would obviously provide a larger area for safe play, limit running around with a football on the pavement, which I've, I've seen kids, you know, tumble, and it's not good. Um, so it would definitely expand, not only the play for those who want to use the turf, but for the, those who don't. It would, it would just spread everybody out and cause more space for everybody. It would support our mission to have students moving their bodies more often. That's the point of recess, right? So it would support that. If the alternative was actual grass, I would vote for that. I mean, if, if, if it was, if it was fake or nature, I would pick nature every time. But that's not the alternative, because that doesn't work. We've tried, we've tried everything we could think of with, with the grass. It does not work with the amount of feet on it. It's just not sustainable, so... Um, and I know we have the expense, but we've budgeted for it already, so I, I know it is a hefty amount, but we have it now. Um, we're lucky that we're in good financial standing, thankfully. Thankfully, we really are. Um, we're able to do this now, and I think we should do things when we're able. I do have some fears about our budget in the coming year, but I had to kind of talk myself down from making a decision based on fear and based on the future, because we don't really know for sure what will happen. So, we're in good standing now. Um, as for the chemicals in the turf, I did make a phone call, um, just to Southwest Greens today. That's the lowest quote that we were given last week. Just for my own satisfaction, I thought I would give them a call, and, um, they eased my mind quite a bit, because we're using the non-toxic selections. Yeah, we're using non-toxic selections, which is great. So, I do, I am voting to support the turf at this time, um, but I want everyone to know that I did, I did take everyone's opinions and thoughts to heart, and I grappled over it for quite some time. But I think it's truly in the best interest of the people using the playground, to have the space and to be able to play even when it's wet.
Any more discussion? Anybody online?
Yeah, just to try and, uh, obviously, the turf is a great idea. Um, I think, you know, moving forward, when we look at the budget, what we plan for in coming years, um, we need to start thinking about, are we athletically absolutely needed? Could we have gotten a teacher with this, um, money, et cetera? Um, because every year, we're in the deficit, with the red, of $200,000, $300,000. The, you know, I think these are just things that we need to be mindful of. Um, obviously, the turf's a great idea. Um, want our kids to be outside, and want them to want the space to run. Um, that's just something that I've been wrestling with and thinking about.
I also just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Del Sandro for, like, doing this work, um, helping out the district. It's, it's sometimes not enough when, you know, we, we pay people and things like that. It, it matters when community members and parents alike are stepping up to, you know, help out and give back to the school. Um, so that when we are talking about being fiscally responsible, having someone who has that expertise, and then also lends it to the district for free, um, it goes, it moves mountains sometimes. So, we appreciate that, and thank you so much.
I'd just like to, and I'll do my best, I apologize. Um, I'd like to tag someone that we had said that I, I do look at from multiple different reasons. Um, and I was, I'm thoroughly grateful for those who took advantage of sending us an email, expressing their concerns, or support either way, um, so that we knew where people stood. And I think that's really important when something comes up. Um, it really helps us in our thought processes to know what people are thinking, because we're here to, um, be available for everyone. And, uh, so I just want to thank those who did send in emails to us in different ways to consider. Um, I also appreciated that the full report was given to us today about, kind of, the start to finish, and, excuse me, lost stuff, if you need. So, I just wanted to say that it's, uh, was a nice thing to see people being passionate about it.
Any further? No? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving into item 6, Motion for Approval Under Student Life. Mr. Pagoda?
Yes, thank you. Uh, item 6A, motion to approve, uh, number 1, motion to approve the closing of the Pom-Pom Account, inactive since 2014, and transfer the remaining balance of $172.45 to RABBA, the River View Athletic Booster Association. Do I have a motion?
Siri?
Paris, second.
Any discussion on the closing of the Pom-Pom Account?
That's supposed to be Pon-Pom.
Pom-Pom.
Right?
Pom-Pom.
Two Ms.?
It is Pom-Pon, and it has been, it, it has been part of River View for a long time. It is not Pom-Pom. I questioned it in the very beginning and was told no.
Listen, I did my research. I asked Sheila before the meeting. I would appreciate little credit. Any discussion on the closing of the Pom-Pom Account?
I was not questioning, just wanted to make sure I understood.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Poor Pom-Pom.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, motions for approval under education, nothing at this time. So, moving into 8, Motion for Approval Under Board Governance. Sorry, my computer's being slow. All right, item 8A, Motion to Approve Board Governance Items As Presented. Number 1, Memorandum of Understanding Pertaining to 2425-001 For Vacation Day Usage Extension Between River View School District And River View Education Support Professionals Association, or RESPA, On Behalf of Kurt Davis. Item 2, The River View School District 2025-26 School Calendar. Item 3, Approval of the Following As River View School District Booster Organizations For the 24-25 School Year According to RSD Policy 915, Pending Receipt Of Any Additional Certification Requirements. Spanish Club, Junior High Student Council, Junior Class Officers and Prom Committee, Senior Class Officers, National Honor Society, and Ecology Club. Do I have a motion?
Paris, so moved.
Wilton, second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. Moving on to 8B. Sorry, this is being really slow for some reason. Uh, Motion to Approve Board Governance Items As Presented. Number 1, Board Policy Review in Its Third Reading. 004 Membership. 006 Meetings. 006.2 Recording of Board Meetings. 008 Organizational Chart. 108 Adoption of Textbooks. 111 Lessons Plans. 138 English as a Second Language and Violingal Education Program. 146.1 Trauma-Informed Approach. 150 Title 1 Comparability of Services. May I have a motion?
Siri?
Paris, second.
Any discussion or questions?
Just thank you to the Policy Committee. You guys are all working really well to, had a good clip to get through what is an arduous and dry task, but necessary. So, thank you.
Thanks for that, but these were the administration.
We know you're already working on it, so thank you.
I just wanted to make sure. Erin, did you have anything? I know, I know, just, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, she doesn't.
Sounds great.
All right.
No, it sounds good.
No, it sounds good. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. All right, moving into Section 9, Motion for Approval Under Personnel. 9A, Motion for Approval For Personnel Items As Presented. Number 1... Number one, individuals with Precision HR Solutions Incorporated as substitutes for the 2425 school year, pending any certification requirements. Bianca Labrador, paraprofessional. Catherine Riggs, teacher. Martin Willis, teacher. Jennifer Tracy, teacher. Paul Beidka, teacher. Riley Ray, nurse. And Katie Persinger, nurse. Number two, Article 11, Section E, sabbatical leave for education development extension for employee 371 for the second half of 2024-2025 school year. Item three, the approval of the change of status from probationary to permanent after successfully completing the 60-day working day demonstration, period four. Julia Mullin, paraprofessional. Kelly Spanbauer, paraprofessional. Gabriela Di Filippo, paraprofessional. And Ina Moreno. Is that also a para or?
Sorry about that.
Okay. Number four, Slippery Rock intern for the music department under Jason Leibel for spring 2425 school year, pending health and clearance requirements. Athena Conderis, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. Apologies. All right. May I please have a motion?
Paris, so moved.
Wilton second.
Any discussion or questions?
Did we also have a custodial resignation? Oh, well, we'd love to hear that.
Okay.
Keep working here.
That's good.
Okay, never mind.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. 9B, approval of personnel items under athletics. This thing is being really slow. Sorry. Our Wi-Fi not working well in here. I might have to use yours if this doesn't load. I don't know why it's not loading. 9B, motion for approval of personnel items as presented. Athletic coaches and volunteer coaches for 2425 school year, pending any clearance, certification, and/or health requirements. William Stoops, assistant baseball coach. Patrick Glockren, assistant baseball coach. Colton Lowman, volunteer baseball coach. Derek Bussie, junior high, seventh grade, boys' basketball coach. Logan Shanty, volunteer coach, ninth grade, boys' basketball. And item two, 202425 athletic event workers as detailed below, pending any clearance, certification, or health requirements. Dave Illenicki, Elizabeth Morgans, Paula Tomlinson, Sean Abraham, and Mark Jones. May I have a motion, please?
Paris, so moved.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. Thank you. No, it's okay. This just is like totally not. Here, why don't you take this back? I'll use his. Mine just like stopped working. It's like frozen. So, I'm just going to make it bigger. All right, so moving into the second hearing of citizens. So, once again, this can be on any school-related items. Nothing needs to be on the agenda. Just come forward, state your name and address, and please keep your comments under three minutes. Sorry, I'm just short. Good evening, my name's Ellen Kealan. My address is 234 College Avenue in Oakmont. I'm a longtime resident here, a Riverview graduate, and my children currently attend 10th Street. I've always been a proud member of this community, but for the first time, I feel embarrassed and disappointed. I'm here tonight to comment on the social media post that was made by our school board president, Ms. Shapiro, after the election. Her post says in part, "If you voted for Trump, you voted to support a convicted felon, a racist, homophobic, misogynistic, pathetic excuse for a human being who has no regard for basic human rights in our democracy. You overlooked all these things because you cannot stand to see a woman, especially a woman of color and power." I'd like to read that last sentence once more. "You, the reader, overlooked all of these things because you, the reader, cannot stand to see a woman, especially a woman of color and power." I take serious offense to these comments, which very clearly state that anyone who voted for Donald Trump must necessarily be a racist and a misogynist because the only reason they would not vote for Kamala Harris is because she's a woman of color. There is absolutely no other way to interpret her statement, and I wholeheartedly reject her defense to the trib where she claims that she only called Trump himself a racist and a misogynist. This is demonstrably false. Now, I happen to be a free speech absolutist. I believe the best solution to bad speech is more speech. In a civilized society, the good ideas will always win. I think Ms. Shapiro has every right to say and post whatever she wants, but as a public official who works for us, she should expect pushback to such divisive rhetoric. It's one thing to disagree on politics and argue over opposing viewpoints. It's what makes our country so unique. But it's quite another to spew this type of vitriol and levy accusations of racism against half of your constituents. People in positions of power are called on to unite us and heighten our level of discourse. Ms. Shapiro's comments do just the opposite. They are ignorant and irresponsible, and they encourage intolerance of those who think or vote differently. Our community should demand higher standards. I think Ms. Shapiro should do the decent thing and issue a formal apology to the parents of this district. And if she chooses not to, I hope parents will consider whether this type of person sets a good example for our children and whether they can trust her to make decisions that are in the best interest of all our children. Perhaps they will vote differently the next time around. Just one final question for the school board president. What if I voted for Donald Trump because before his rally in Butler this summer, he met with my 95-year-old grandmother in person, shook her hand, looked her in the eye, and promised her that he would bring her son home? My uncle, a man named Mark Fogel, was wrongfully convicted and has been rotting away in a Russian prison cell for the last three years. Is that a good enough reason to vote for Trump, or does that still make me a racist? Thanks for your time.
My name is Les Leja. I reside at 307 Canterbury Court here in Oakmont. My granddaughter is a student at the high school. I'm not here to complain about anything. But what I'd like to do is have a brief conversation about Act 67. I have a background in EMS, fire service, law enforcement. I got into the private sector as a licensed private investigator. I've done some work for school districts. And I want to make sure that I understand Act 67 very briefly. I see three categories that apply here. And that first one is an unarmed security guard. Unfortunately, what I've experienced in corporate environments in schools is that there's a high turnover rate because the occupation doesn't pay very well. Maybe it should, okay? And having said that, then you don't have continuity to the workforce, so you don't get to know the students, the staff, the building, et cetera. The other, I guess, option is a armed security guard. I am very much opposed to that, but I want to tell you why. In order for a security guard to carry a lethal weapon, it's covered under Act 235. It's a 40-hour program, okay, that permits them to carry a lethal weapon, a firearm. I think that's appropriate in a, you know, a warehouse, a manufacturing facility, maybe an office building. It is not adequate enough training for a school. I'm very opposed to that, knowing very much about that. And then there's the third thing, as a resource officer, where we get into cost. And of course, finances is always a concern. There are some benefits to that. I did a little snooping, so to speak. I see that Plum, Penn Hills, Highland, Springdale, and Fox Chapel have resource officers. The benefit of that is you hire a recently retired police officer who's well-trained, well-experienced, understands, you know, mental health issues, juvenile-related problems. And they, in turn, make between $40 and $45 an hour. I call them seasonal employees. You call them something else. They don't work, they don't get paid. But I found out through some of them that they enjoy having the summer off because they're retired and they go play golf and do all the other things they want to do. The advantage to a resource officer, or what I say, a school police officer, is that a judge under Act 91 can then authorize that individual to detain a person, to effect an arrest, to write citations, confiscate, contraband, you name it. So, I think that that obviously is a situation I think is ideal, but can we financially afford that? I don't know. The other certainty, maybe somebody can answer this. Are you required a person in each building or just in the district? Do we know that?
Just in the district.
Okay, all right. So, at any rate, I think that, I would hope that, the only thing I hope you don't do is put in an armed security guard, okay? I would like to see us get into a resource officer, but I understand there's financial considerations. The other thing I want to mention very briefly.
If you could wrap it up, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, I spent a lot of time researching all this, just so you know.
Thank you.
What I want to say real quick is the metal detectors. You saw there was a gross negligence or a, what do you want to say, breach of security at a school district. If you're going to put them in, that's up to you, but you know there's policies and procedures you've got to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paula Tomlinson, 234 3rd Street. Thank you for approving the playground. I had two boys who loved playing when the weather permitted, but when the weather didn't permit, or it was too soggy or muddy, they had to stay in, and they would get home and be out of control because they didn't have recess. So, I'm so thankful for that. I am curious to know what is going to go around the play units because when we put, when the PTO in the district put the entire new playground in, we invested in some of the foam product and the fake, it's like recycled tires, that black stuff that goes everywhere. But the foam had given way, and about, I don't know, 15 years ago, one of our students fell and split his head open. So, there's cement under the playset. Is there new foam going down around that whole playset? Or is this turf going to be the entire? Isn't that something I think I?
The turf's just going to go where the grass is. The foam is going to stay around the playsets.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on. And to our committee reports, finance will be first.
We haven't met, so we have no report.
Okay. All right, education next.
I'll do my best. It is available as an attachment on the board documents. We had a really good overview meeting with our administrators at 10th Street, Verner, and the junior, senior high schools. So, thank you to them all again for getting us through the first nine weeks, starting with 10th Street. Dr. Zokowski reports we had three.
Thank you. Hope you feel better. All right, moving into safety committee report.
The workplace safety committee met on October 24th. The committee members are going to complete, we're going to redo our safety training recertification before the next meeting, December 19th. So, we're all going to recertify by then. We just kind of had a reminder that this committee is to review workers' comp in any of the schools here. So, not necessarily, not security, but workers' comp. They repaired the high school door that needed some repair, and Verner is going to get a gate for the outside fence to help with any type of evacuation needs because they were, if they had to evacuate from the playground, they had to go towards the school. So, now there's going to be a gate so that they'll have options. We reviewed some discussion about the vape sensors at the high school, and then we're going to meet again in a few weeks, December 19th. That's it.
Thank you. Student life.
Mine was given expertly by the administrators last week, so no report.
Okay, thank you. And policy committee.
Roger, Erin, feel free to chime in. We met as a committee last week with administration on Tuesday, November 12th. The meeting went really well. We got through all of the policy revisions that we recommended to the administration via the 100 section. And we, as the policy committee, also reviewed all of the zero section as well. So, zeros and 100s are officially done after that meeting. Administration gave us the recommendations for the 200 section. And I don't think we had any issues with that as well. So... So our next meeting will be scheduled after we have our reorganization meeting next month, once all of the committee chair persons and the delegates are selected for either the committees or the delegations. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Moving into delegate reports, I will start with communications and marketing. Say relatively brief, just thank you to Melissa, who's our communications specialist from the AIU, for attending and photographing a number of our events. Our football and cheer senior day, as well as 10th Street Veterans Day. The children sang to seniors at the Willows up at Longwood. Also had Pittsburgh Today Live filming at 10th Street, and we got some photos of that. It should be airing, I believe, this Wednesday, I think, say, on television. Should be exciting. And then also just, of course, posting all of these types of items and more on our social media channels, updating photos on the website, as well as other information, like the superintendent's bulletin, and menus, and other details like that. Other stories included news from Rview, the art and tech students visiting Falling Water, the Gannon University Model UN Conference, and the AK Valley Athletes of the Week. So we're continuing to gain followers from those platforms, so feel free to jump on any of those to check out news as it happens. Steph, I don't believe you said you had a Forbes report.
No, Forbes.
She had to step out, okay. And then moving to legislative, next.
Thank you. There's actually a lot for the time of year that it is in Harrisburg. Just for the public's knowledge, anything that I've talked about since I've been the delegate on this committee that has not become a bill will expire. So what happens when they have elections is, at the end of the term, at the end of that year, anything that has not moved forward is basically dead, a dead bill, and will have to be reintroduced and go through the legislative process from the beginning. So it's a way to make sure that someone coming in doesn't have to navigate legislation that's already, like, in the process. They might not have an opportunity to weigh in on that. So the governor signed all kinds of things, including diabetes education and notification, the TIC protocol in schools, direct deposit regarding work comp, the structured literacy program that we've talked about several times, that I know when we read what's included in that bill, we have a little chuckle. The mentors for students, where PDE will hold a repository of approved adults that have clearances and all those things that are required in schools in order to mentor students. So both chambers technically are not in recess until the 30th of November, but they have already recessed officially. Everyone who won in the last election will take their seat on January 7th. I have listed both the state house and the state senate have already reorganized, like, their internal leadership, and I put all of that information down. Senator Costa, who's our state senator, has retained his leadership position, which is really beneficial for us in order to communicate with him. And then just some things with PDE. They have their final meeting. There are some, you know, cyclical reviews of curriculum and things like that that are coming up. As we already know, we're ahead of the game with the personal finance standards that are coming through to be enacted and required throughout the state. And then just, I did read a little bit of this, the annual report on education certifications, because that's always, you know, makes us understand the pressure that we're all going to be under as we see retirements and things like that, that we want to make sure people are going into the profession. And then I think there was only one other big highlight, uh, which was, and I sent this already to Ms. Lubert and Dr. English and our finance committee, the state has created a tool to be able to look up grants. All of the grants are in one place, and you can use the tool to find things based upon, like, the topic or the need, instead of scouring hundreds of pages of state website information. So I thought that was, like, actually very exciting, and will probably save lots of people a lot of time. So that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Eastern area?
Our last meeting was on October 24th. The building projects have been underway, building projects and improvements are underway, and Dr. English and Sheila are working with the administrators at the Sunrise School about further recommendations and long-term plans for the buildings. The, Dr. English showed a picture that the floor, new flooring is in, and so it's nice to see some progress going there. The board approved a $500 stipend for Ms. Lubert for her participating with the EAS Board and coordinating with Dr. English and Ms. Steiner, and that has been extremely helpful and appreciated by the board, so a small stipend was approved. The solicitor for EAS continues to work with the AIU on a proposed lease agreement. Once that's completed, he'll be sending it to all of the participating districts to be approved. Dr. Palmero from the AIU, he expressed great appreciation for the collaboration that's occurred in support of the Sunrise School and the students. He reported they've had professional, their main focus of professional development right now is on IEP compliance development and writing, so that everybody's kind of on the same page and doing things correctly and timely, so. Mr. Campos, who's the principal at the Sunrise School, thanked the board again for the building improvements and emphasized the positive impact on the staff and the students. A successful open house was completed, and they had their first bocce tournament on the 25th with the other AIU schools. Their multimedia class designed t-shirts for each school. They also have the Carnegie Museum program, museums on the move coming in one time a month, as well as therapy dogs coming one time a month. Mr. Matzie, who is the building and grounds director, thanked the board also for the quick approval of projects that needed to be done, including lights in the gym and the flooring project that was, took place through November. New boilers were ordered and expected to be delivered in December, and then a schedule is being set for the parking lot maintenance that was approved. And then some smaller jobs have been completed, some door hinges and plumbing work was completed. And Mr. Matzie and Sheila are looking for grants to pay for the radon testing. The board also approved gym rentals for two men's basketball leagues at $1,000 per year. They're leagues that have been going to the school for a good amount of time, so they're insured and have been, they just continued their agreements with them. Our next meeting is on the 21st of November, which is this Thursday. And then I just wanted to say a personal thank you to one of our former board members, Jane Miller, because I go to these meetings and they are running smooth as can be, and when she was on this board, it was very chaotic and really, she dealt with a lot of things and helped get our district and all the other districts through this process, and I kind of came in on the tail end of when things got great, you know, so. I just wanted to give her a shout out because she really invested a lot of time and energy into getting this where we are, so, thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our reports. Moving into solicitor's report from Mr. Miss Conti.
Yes, we work with the administration on various student personnel, policy, and right-to-know issues.
Okay, thank you. And there was no executive session held prior. There will not be one following. So with that, if no one else has any other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, since Steph is not here.
You're seconding? All right. Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and have a good week.
Where's your paper? Oh, I sent it to you on Instagram.
I'll just fill out the paper and then I'll get my message. Good, I'm all good now. Yeah, actually today I went through the document.
Take it with you, then. That way you have not to show that you were here. He won't say, he already knows you guys are here.
Oh, yeah, but you just said it.
I did.
Were you here, did?
I did. You think I did it? But that's actually pretty, I know, your head was down, I know, but your head was down all the way, and I was like, oh, I just sent her that. Your book. No, that's a really important part. You're welcome, babe. How's it going, buddy?
You too.
Do you know where you're going yet? Or do you have one more year? No, where are you going?
I don't know.
You don't know yet, okay. Are you going to kick or play, or what?
Uh, gonna try to walk.
Very good. Love to hear it. How's my girly girl?
Sorry.
I can tell. There you go, babe.
Thank you.
Nice talent, one.
Yeah. Always.
Always.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro.
I'll talk to you soon. I'll be down. All right, I wasn't-